I have to order and if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellen Boss.
Engels.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Folkins.
He said here.
Oh, here.
And I'm here.
Okay, I heard him.
Okay, at this time, would someone entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Before we approve the agenda, I would like to amend the agenda. As with the prior meeting, I would like to move good of the order after... Oh, it is. What, good of the order is after the public comments?
Not on my count.
No.
Nope.
Okay, well then I would like to make sure that...
But it might be.
That the good of the order is moved after public comments.
At the end of the agenda.
At the end of the meeting.
Okay, so support that the amended... The motion to approve the amended agenda.
Councilmember Ellen Boss, Engels.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. This time we'll open our public comments for the second meeting. Again, if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk, that is very much appreciated. And also if you can keep your comments to three minutes or less.
My name is Pat Ponzac. I live in Cadillac. Have lived in Cadillac for quite a while. Came here first in 1962. Long experience of Cadillac, growing many development things, the Keith McKellup Walkway. Lot of improvements over the time I've been here. It's a wonderful community with wonderful neighborhoods. I sure hope it can stay that way. I want to talk about short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are lodgings for less than 30 days. There are a variety of short-term rentals. There are hotels, motels, tourist cabins, B&amp;Bs, bed and breakfasts. A bed and breakfast is one kind of a short-term rental. It's not something different from a short-term rental. It's a lodging of less than 30 days. Unlike the other short-term rentals of entire unsupervised houses that go kind of wild from time to time, a B&amp;B must be the primary residence of the live-in owner. They don't just own this house and run it out, they have to live there. That has to be their primary residence. A B&amp;B must be the primary residence of a living-there owner. Many cities have short-term rentals and B&amp;Bs. Many of these cities are not happy about it. New York City recently enacted and enforced Local Law 18, which closed 85% of the short-term rentals in New York City. Honolulu only allows short-term rentals in resort-zoned areas and a couple of specific apartment areas. In addition, in Honolulu, anyone selling real property must provide the buyer with a short-term rental disclosure form stating, before they even buy it, they have to let them know whether the property is approved and may be legally used for short-term rentals. They know upfront. Here, I guess you just have to kind of pitch in and find out the hard way. In New Orleans, urban planner Jeffrey Goodman says, "New Orleans is a unique place because so much of what we sell is culture, art, it's food. But the people who bank the art and cook the food and play the trumpets have a hard time living here." So if the locals who make New Orleans special are first to move away, what's left? New York City, Honolulu, New Orleans, those are big cities. The last time I talked about cities, it was Petoskey and the kind of rules that they enforce. Petoskey are towns like us. New York City, Honolulu, New Orleans, they're not towns like us. But they're concerned about short-term rentals and we should be too.
Thank you.
While I'm up. Yeah, I'm Andy. This is the case file for the 128 Pine Street. There were 85 pages in that. So I know you guys are tired of hearing from me. So this is mostly what Mike had said in the cases. A statement of facts, the defendant is self-proclaimed Airbnb coach who teaches others how to invest in short-term rentals. He's got 31 properties. OS2 zoning does not allow for it and never has by right or special use. Even though zoning request was denied, he continued to use it as a short-term rental. Repeatedly informed dependent in writing that they were not allowed. He ignored city letters dated May 5th, 23, April 1st, 24, May 30th, 24, and June 3rd, 24. That was an email from Laura. The argument was OS2 does not allow for short-term rentals. John Wallace's memo of October of '21 has been continuously published on the city's website well before the defendant purchased the property. The city codified in '23 that short-term rentals in TS1, TS2, B1 and B2, no question, this is not a permitted use. Defendant, as a sophisticated and experienced Airbnb investor and broker, knew this. Nonetheless, he continued to use as a short-term rental even after rezoning was denied. Defendant brazen violation of the zoning ordinance harms the city and its residents. One resident noted in the response to the city about short-term rentals, "It's extraordinarily unfair to allow current short-term rentals without penalty." Another neighbor commented, "It's disgusting to see people continue to run short-term rentals. They have been told to stop. I live across the street." And he knows that they've been shut down and always has people staying there and having the cops come in the middle of the night. Mike says this harmed to the public and the city warrants an injunctive release. Defendant's use as a short-term rental was not lawful when he began. The defendant unsuccessfully sought a rezoning because it was unlawful. The injunction will protect the public. Legal zoning is intended to ensure that the public use of the land is situated in appropriate location to limit inappropriate overcrowding and promote public health, safety and welfare. When the land use violates the zoning, it's an injunction that is necessary to protect the public health, safety and welfare. Property owners rely on the city to enforce its zoning ordinance to ensure that the character of the neighborhood is protected. For that reason, an injunction in this case will not harm... Will not harm the public, instead will protect the public. Consent judgment was dated on 7/24/24 by Judge Almore and said that they had to stop on August 28th, 2024. So within four months, it's back at the planning board and approved. I would say it's easier to ask permission or easier to ask forgiveness than beg for permission. I have people that I see on my property. I let anybody go out there and hunt as long as they let me know. That's not a problem. It's a problem when I see them out there and they don't have permission. These people are violating, they're trespassing on all of us.
Thank you.
Rick Torres. It's nice when you can interact with our politicians, our city managers, when they are courteous and professional. And that courtesy and professionalism is appreciated by everyone they come in contact with. However, in the realm of courteous and professional, there needs to be a line drawn with regards to statements that are not true. If someone is telling somebody that, yeah, this has been approved, this is what we want. I'll give you an example. I've got on good source that our LDFA wanted testing the year that you denied testing. The LDFA wanted it, but as chairperson, you decided with our superintendent. You didn't want it. You went against the board, Mr. Petia. You can be as professional as you want with me, but when it comes down to somebody misleading or being deceitful, it just doesn't cut it. Doesn't cut it with the state of Michigan where I worked, had a career with the state of Michigan, and it doesn't and should not work here either. Insulting your staff, Ms. Shippers, insulting the community that takes of their time to come to these meetings and telling them, "We're just the small group that comes here to give our voice and you talk to more people in the supermarkets." That was an insult to us. We take of our time to be here and those words hurt us. Should never have said that. You are a public servant. Public servants are not there to insult your public, to lie to your public. You are there to be upfront, honest and fair with your public. And if it doesn't happen, then get out of what you're doing. Mr. Engels, you ran on a platform of supporting short-term rentals. Where are you now? Voting in favor of them. You lied to your public to get elected to your post. Unacceptable. I'll leave it at that. I'm not here to insult people, but I am here to say, let the truth be told and let honesty rule and fairness across the board and kindness be your rule of thumb.
Oh, was I supposed to sign in to speak?
No, you can.
Pardon? Okay, well, I'll sign in a minute. Paula Myers, I've lived in Cadillac since 1985. I was a teacher and taught my kids. This is for everybody.
Paula, if you could please speak to us and not the audience. Thank you.
I taught my kids conflict resolution. What I'm seeing from you and from you on social media, from my point of view, is not acceptable. Whatever the solutions to the problems the city is facing now will be addressed. It will come to a conclusion. But the anger and hatred thrown back at our elected city officials and for people sitting behind me is not acceptable. And in the end, we need to honor the truth, honor people that are attempting to work on a solution and not bring the hate speech and the anger any further. Deal with it as adults and speak the truth and work on a solution. And flinging insults online and threatening people is not a solution ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I prepared remarks tonight and I'm going to be sticking strictly to them. So my name is Sam Canop. I'm from Cadillac. I'm a graduate in 2008. Upon graduating, I went into the United States Army for 12 years on active duty. In 2019, I returned home to raise my family in the community that I grew up in. My community... My family has been a member of this community, to my knowledge, at least back to 1950. That's kind of where the trail goes cold for me. So my investment in this community or my, I guess, if you will, you know, Cadillac is home to me. It's been my home of record the entire time I was in the military. People would see the AAR shipping crates in the military and I was proud to stand up and say, "Hey, that's my community." Two months ago, I watched the meeting and I want to address Ms. Shippers, Councilmember Shippers. So during that meeting, something stood out to me. You were, and this is quoted roughly, I didn't get time to look at the actual minutes to get it in my thing, but your quote was something to the effect of, "Things you've heard or things you've been told." Exactly what Mr. Rick was just saying a minute ago. If you walked into the 84th District Courthouse or the 28th Circuit Court and told a judge, "Things you've heard or things you've been told," what's he going to say to you? That is hearsay. The people that are on record in this building right now, talking into this microphone, are your constituents. The voice of the absent do not count, ever. Unless you bring in a sworn affidavit of those people's statements or some other legal document that maybe a lawyer can give you, their voice does not matter if they're not here. And I'll say my other remarks for when we get to the second closed session, or the second session.
Thank you.
Bill Barnett, you need a bigger room for people so they can sit in here with you and listen and engage. You've outgrown your home here. Please pass a resolution asking residents to test their water. I've said that since June 3rd of last year, seven, eight months. Put in place a city-paid well-testing program. It will inform and warn the community. You can investigate PFAS, which has contaminated 80% of our wells. Almost one-half the wells tested are over federal guidelines, some as much as 400 to 500%. You need to employ a social worker or a counselor to work with these distraught residents who have not been protected. They are upset because their water is poisoned and it looks like the city's doing nothing. There's a lack of information being given out by the city. No one is explaining what is going on or how we got here. Please appoint a citizens advisory committee as well. That would include hearing township, citizens, maybe board members. Get some interested parties on a committee that can work together for a solution. No one with a private well, in my opinion, in Northwest Cadillac should be drinking their well water or one out of two is poisoned. Why would they drink their well water even if they had a clean test? Please pass a resolution to have them stop drinking their water and provide them with bottled water, whatever you can get. Do your press releases on that. Please do something. Somebody, please explain in detail what happened. Explain from the beginning where the PFAS came from, the mistakes the city's made since 2018 when you passed a ordinance to cap wells. Why were five wells not capped in the industrial park? Why did you sit for a year and a half and not say anything in 2018 when they finally came to tell you, "People are drinking contaminated water in that area"? Why weren't they tested in 18 and 20? No discipline for these failures. Why don't you have a superfund attorney in place? You haven't hired a PFAS expert, a consultant. You need a PFAS expert immediately. I've been asking for robust private well testing for these families and the children. We need a full-blown health study to determine what effects of 50 years, like Jim Stiver who came in here today, who's had two cancers living on Marathon. Bladder, liver. We need blood serum testing for all these people. That was a state priority in 2017. Rick Snyder's group came out with it. Number two on the list, blood testing. Please write letters to the 223 homes. Go to their doors. Explain it to them. Explain it to us. Say something. The silence that you've had is what's dangerous, not people online communicating and criticizing your actions. Free speech. Okay, that's not rhetoric. It's not dangerous. The dangers come from you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett, you're turning this off.
The dangers come from you, not from us.
Thank you, Bill.
Cindy's going to help me here.
Cindy Knitz, I'm a resident of Cadillac. This hookup ordinance, you cannot charge these people. This was yet another huge mistake to roll out this hookup ordinance with the requirement that innocent well owners pay. Whoever thought this was a good idea should be fired. Seek state or federal funding first. Use your COVID money. Every step you have taken or not taken is driving the residents over the edge. No social media discussions criticizing your failed leadership. Thankfully, blaming nonexistent rhetoric is not working. Citizens are joining together to seek solutions and to hold you accountable to fix this. No one is giving us answers. How did this happen? People are furious because they are getting phone calls and are being told, "Don't drink the water. Don't brush your teeth with it, don't cook with it or give it to your pets. How about hot tub showers, humidifiers? Are those safe?" That's why they are alarmed. Are you not listening? These phone calls came in the same day your utilities director went on TV and said your levels were low. If they are so low, why the expensive hookup ordinance? Why these upsetting phone calls in heat maps? People are mad at the secrets that were kept while children were drinking poison all over the northwest side of Cadillac. You were told twice by me, by Bill last summer that the Anderson well on 8th Street was contaminated and that you needed to look into it. Do you hate me, hate Bill that much that you wouldn't listen? Don't you dare say you didn't know or were not told. Your own LDFA blocked testing in 2020. Was... What was the reason to hide PFAS from everybody? Tell us. Our health, safety and welfare has been in your hands. It is your job. Do your job.
Hello, my name is Carla Moore. I live in Cadillac and I just had a few things I wanted to point out. I myself was diagnosed with kidney cancer and thankfully it was caught in stage one. It was treated January 20th and, like, two weeks ago. And I'm thankful I'm fine now. However, I still have to go through a lot of follow-up checks, you know, CT scans and all the doctor visits that are associated. So while I was sitting here, I happened to think, "How many other people have some kind of cancer from the PFAS and don't even know it?" My cancer was discovered because I went in for a CT scan because of back pain, okay? Had I not had back pain, they would not have known about the kidney cancer that was growing. So that's the main thing. Seems like a lot of CYAs going on. I'd like, I think, just fix it the right way so that people can heal and move on. And, Madam Mayor, this is your legacy. I mean, you decide how it's going to go, okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Art Stevens. And I know the last few months you've seen a lot of me. For some of you, you probably don't like that. I stayed out of the picture since I got off council. Tonight, I should mention how I got involved again. Because I had members of the LDFA committee talking to me and I told them, "Oh yeah, there's private wells." They kept being told, "There's no private wells." You can go... I encourage you to go listen to some of the meetings. Up until this fall, there's no private wells. I didn't know what I was talking about. Then we come into, it's been a great point brought up. It's been brought up, "Well, why is Art saying anything? There was pollution when he was on council." And I agree with that. Here's the difference. The council was never told these things. There's a 2015 five-year report from Kaiser saying, "City of Cadillac, you need to get everybody on private wells in the city hooked up to municipal water because of contamination." It wasn't given to entire council, maybe no council members. We have to get the communication up. We have to get it to you. The reason I've been trying to email you and I know you guys have probably been annoyed since October, some of this is the information that's hard to do in three minutes. There's a lot of data out there. We got to make sure it gets into everybody's mind. I know there was a statement made about the LDFA making a decision. Come to find out, they didn't have all the facts. We have to. We need to unite. There's been a battle. I've heard both sides. I've heard Bill Barnett is the enemy. If he hadn't brought this up, there wouldn't be a problem. The Anderson family. The way I look at it is, where would we be today if they didn't bring it up? We know for at least 10 years, people in this room knew about it and didn't say anything. Were we expecting that that same day they were going to say something? If you like Bill or not, I think we need to applaud of bringing this message forward. It's not the messengers, it's the message. We have to, as a community, come together. There are some now looking at the forced hookups. I really encourage you, there's at least two members of the LDFA. I don't want to use their names without permission. They're really pushing with the city. Let's do what other communities have done. Let's get a group together. Let's look at funding options. This is a prime time. Communities all over have done it. To jump out on an ordinance, and I don't know how far you want to go tonight, of having the hookups, there may be other options if we can bring it to the table and look for a solution. The problems are done. I think to build the trust, we have to know that there's accountability. We have to change the path. If council's not getting all the information, I think that would help.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Do I sign it twice? I think so.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, it's me again. My name's Mary Galvanic. I run the Cadillac Farmers Market, Reed City Farmers Market, Farm-to-Home Vegetable Basket System, following food insecurities. And I also own and operate a farm called Forest and Farm that educates people about healthy options. Upon moving back here to Cadillac, I noticed that everyone was sick. Lots of people were sick. I worked with kids in Colorado, did not see a lot of ADD, didn't see a lot of ADHD, ODD, autism. Come to Cadillac and the numbers are profound. You can see it just by shaking hands with people here. The people are sick. We are ignoring the health of our people. This is abhorrent. This should be a crime. We have to get better. And by getting better, there is a cancer that needs to be removed. Someone who is creating really bad blood between the business owners and the community members in this town. Someone whose wife actually reported my post as a scam in that post. Only thing that post said was the time and date of the meeting that we were all trying to get everyone to know about. That is abhorrent behavior for a leader. That is wild. We have a health crisis. There are dozens and dozens of people that are sick. I have spent dozens and dozens and dozens of my hours on the phone with dozens and dozens of sick people and concerned people, probably more time than any of you up there. And I know Susan has spent more time than any of you up there and Bill. We are not villains. We are here helping. We are delivering water. We are shaking hands. We are giving hugs. We are passing out information that is sent to me in case boxes from Eagle. And I'm passing them out to physicians because our doctors don't know about PFAS. When Eagle told them, "Go to your doctor, go to your doctor." The doctors don't know. We need to get an education to these doctors so they know where the heat map is so that when somebody comes to their office and they're like, "Oh, you live on Marathon, we need to check you for this, this and this." I'm getting that information to doctors. I am. That is crazy to me. Susan wants you to know that from the Clean Water Advocates of Cadillac, which is a group that Susan and I put together to help people, and it is helping tons of people, that she does not want to see an ordinance. She wants to see you guys work together with the community, just like Bill's saying. I will be on a committee all day long. Susan will be as well, and I bet you there's another 10 to 20 people behind me who'd love to join us. We are like a dog on a bone with this one. I am never... I am never letting go. I am never letting go! We want, you want feedback, Mr. King? I am gonna swamp your inbox. I have hundreds of people that are upset with the way we were treated down at the market by, by Mr. Marcus. Dozens and dozens of them, hundreds of them. We have fought once before here at the city council and filled this room for our market and will do it again every single week. I bet you I could get more numbers like this for y'all every single week, and I am dedicated to it. I am here for it. I wanna be your best friend, I wanna be your best friend, I wanna be your best friend, I already am. Wanna be your best friend? I love you. I don't even know you and I love you. Time for you to go, Marcus. Goodbye.
Don Euler, 617 Colfax Street. We've been in that house since 1959. It's a block and a half away from Kaiser. I believe this problem isn't just in the last year or two with this PFAS stuff. I believe it goes all the way back to 1989 when Kaiser had the super fund and everything, when that was all supposed to be cleaned up. I believe it's a failure from way back then. Why, why they stopped testing is beyond me. My brother Bob had cancer three years after I had cancer in 2000. He's 11 years older than me. He also had bladder cancer. He had colon and bladder cancer. We probably drank that water early on. PFAS, forever chemicals, whatever you wanna call them, chromium, all that stuff that's gonna harm people, that's gonna cause cancer, has been around since the 1920s in this town, in our drinking water. The well thing that I'm concerned about is that, I don't know when my parents had our house hooked up to water. Sometime after 64, I think, is when they came up with municipal water. But sometime between then and finding, them finding out that some of these wells were bad and, uh, they had to drill new wells and they capped the ones that are over there in the industrial park. I think those, those wells should be tested to see what was in there and what's still in those. Even though you're not using them, it would be a, a great marker to see where that aquifer is. I love this town. I've lived here my whole life. I love the people here. We all wanna get along, we all wanna do what's best for everyone. On a, on a side note, I, I'd like to know with this Airbnb thing, why you guys took them people to court only to try to change it around again after four months? Why the lawyer said in his statement that, um, that the, the community, the people around there didn't want and shouldn't have to deal with people coming in from other towns? That it wasn't a good thing for that neighborhood? Did he change his mind on what his opinion was then? Cause you guys should be asking him about that. I don't wanna get too far off topic and I know I'm probably close to my three minutes, but, uh, praise God.
Hi, my name is Sheri Ellenboss. I do not live in Cadillac. I have been a member of the community for over 50 years. I grew up in Harrietta and I now live in Boone. However, I do run the Cadillac Farmers Market with Mary and Emily. And, uh, so we have had previous, um, con- conversations. And, uh, and I, I just wanna finish what Mary was saying. We will be knocking on doors and trying to help educate the people that are in need of water fixing. And, uh, you are welcome to go with her, or me, or whoever's going. And then, uh, the market will soon become a nonprofit. We have applied for that status. And, uh, we will be doing fundraising to try and help with this problem. We, Mary's words, "We will not stop, we will not give up." In my words, um, whenever there is a, a situation like this, you don't give up. You don't sweep it under the floor. You don't not worry about it. "It has to be fixed, we got people with cancer." Why would you allow something like that to happen? That is horrible! It's been swept under the rugs for so many years, and now you've got sick people. If that, maybe you should be drinking the water from Marathon Drive. We all need to work together. This is unacceptable. Solutions are not all there right now, but if you work towards a common goal, things will happen. Sweeping it under the rug, telling half-truths, flat-out lying, none of that is gonna solve any problem. All it does is make it snowball. So something's gotta happen. And, uh, we are, we are here to help. Bio-salads are being spread on farmland. I live in a rural community and it's being spread there. I will be testing my water. And having to help the person, I better not have PFAS.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda for this evening.
I did have a concern with minutes, on the last page of the minutes where it looked like we wanted to have our agenda order changed. And I, I wasn't attributed to anyone, so, um, what, I, because that was not my understanding of, of that meeting. And I know that, um, let's see, where am I? I suppose as long as we can move forward with, uh,
We did change it.
We changed that already, so I don't have to change that. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And then Sandy, we have several communications and appointments tonight. You'd like to start?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the request of Clam Torch, RMPL LLC, doing business as Clam Lake Beer Company. Raven Barbecue LLC, doing business as Raven Social. Feaster Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Roaring 20 Saloon. Roasted Cafe LLC and My Mescal Mexican Grill LLC to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in 2025, subject to the conditions listed.
Would someone like to make that exact motion?
I will make.
You don't have to repeat it all.
Okay. I will, um, make, have a motion to approve the sidewalk cafes as presented.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the temporary sign request from Friends of the Library as presented and to authorize staff to approve changes in dates if requested.
Okay, um, I will make a motion to approve the temporary sign request from Friends at the Library as presented and to authorize staff to approve changes in dates if required.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Appointments?
Appointments, please.
It's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Sheri Alt to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February 3rd, 2028.
I will make a motion to reappoint Sheri Alt to a three-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals, which will end on February 3rd, 2028.
Support.
Councilmember Ellenboss? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Louis Nichols to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February 3rd, 2028.
I will make a motion to reappoint, um, Louis Nichols to a three-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals, which will end on February 3rd, 2028.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of John Putman to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on February 3rd, 2028.
I will make a motion to reappoint John Putman to a three-year term on the Planning Commission, representing Ward III, um, for a term that will end on February 3rd, 2028.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Ingles? Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Adam Nelson to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on February 3rd, 2027.
I'll make a motion to appoint Adam Nelson to a two-year term on the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority, which will expire, expire February 3rd, 2027.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Mike Solomon to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term to expire on February 3rd, 2029.
I would actually like to make that motion to approve the appointment of Mike Solomon to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term to expire on February 3rd, 2029.
Support.
Councilmember Ellenboss? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And, um, council needs to appoint the regular member and alternate to the board review for a one-year term to expire on February 3rd, 2026.
Yes.
Well, Brian's not here, so maybe we should appoint him.
I will, I will happily still be on the board review, so.
Thank you. And who is the current alternate?
I am.
T.I. is.
Are you still willing? Okay. So would one of you like to make that motion?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we continue and as stated with, uh, Robert Ingles and T.I. Shippers for the board of review.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Who has support?
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Uh, yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And before we go to the city manager's report, I would just like to say, you know, you, you all just heard a lot of, uh, reappointments to our boards and commissions and, um, we couldn't do the work that we do in the city without the volunteers that sit on our boards. So I would just like to say, thank you to these folks who are being reappointed and to all of the volunteers that are out there that serve on our boards and commissions. Thank you. And now we'll go to the city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The first item, uh, under the manager's report this evening is a, uh, request for additional compensation, uh, for the Cadillac Housing Commission and for all employees as such. Uh, this is an annual request. It is done, uh, through ordinance, uh, in which the city of Cadillac is required to consider that request. As I've mentioned in prior years, these dollars do not come from the city's coffers. Uh, these come from their own funding sources. Uh, their request this year is for a, uh, 4% annual cost of living pay adjustment, again, for all, uh, housing commission employees.
I'll make a motion to approve the compensation change request from the Cadillac Housing Commission as presented.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is a request regarding the consideration of a bid or bids that came in for a countertop water system. Uh, this is a DIANIs reverse osmosis water system that we use within the laboratory of the Cadillac wastewater treatment plant. Uh, these systems allow for the city to be able to use purified water, uh, for the use in our laboratory tests. Uh, three bids were received. Uh, the recommendation, uh, of the three bids is to go with Survey Pure out of Bay City, Michigan. Uh, each bid, uh, included both the systems as well as a year of consumables required to operate the systems. Uh, the Survey Pure system, uh, was a little bit cheaper for the cost of the system with a slightly higher cost for consumables. And that's why you'll see the lowest bid was $16,458 for Dixon Sprinter, uh, versus Survey Pure with, which was $16,493 cents, excuse me, $493.10. However, the Survey Pure, uh, vendor is someone that we are familiar with and we prefer to stick with. Uh, and therefore, the recommendation this evening would be to award it to Survey Pure with funds available in our water and sewer fund.
I do have a question for Mr. De, Deaton. Um, is this replacing two that we already have, or is it adding?
It's replacing two that have, uh, out, outdone their life, you know? They're on life support currently.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase of two countertop DIANIs, uh, of water systems to Serve, to Serve Pure, Survey Pure, in the amount of $16,493.10.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellenboss? Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next request is an out-of-state travel request. Uh, in accordance with our, uh, reimbursement policy, uh, travel, uh, requests for out-of-state travel first get reviewed by me and then needs consent to city council. Uh, Danielle, our community development coordinator, is requesting to attend a Main Street Now conference, that's what it's called, um, in April, in Pennsylvania. Uh, the city, uh, just for some background context, is currently, uh, an engaged, uh, select member of the Michigan Main Street Program, which is a program that our DDA, uh, has, um, supported us in terms of applying for and, uh, getting, um, getting ourselves, uh, Main Street certified. In fact, just a quick plug, if, if people are, are looking to pick up, uh, some work in, in the community and have the right credentials, we are looking at hiring a Main Street Program Coordinator to bring onboard as well. Uh, and that advertisement, uh, was posted, uh, recently on our, uh, website as well as in the newspaper and, and in some other, uh, locations. Uh, this, uh, this event provides an opportunity, uh, to hear from directors and experts across the nation on, on approaches, uh, to downtown economic success. Uh, scheduled to have opportunities for attendees to quote-unquote strengthen networks, gain new skills, discover new ideas through hearing case studies, educational sessions, and mobile workshops. Um, our staff member, um, Danielle, in, in her position with the Community Development Department, uh, is really our primary liaison, uh, to this new program that we're trying to get, get in the middle of and feel that there's some strong value, uh, uh, for her to attend. Uh, costs for the, uh, attendance at the conference are estimated to be approximately $2,800. Uh, and the fiscal year '25 budget does have adequate appropriations. Uh, and therefore, the recommendation would be to approve the request as presented.
Is this the same conference we spent $5,000 or almost $6,000 on about a year ago for two employees to go down or two staff members?
Different.
I think it is, much the same.
Different convention, but same topic.
Okay. And, and right now, do we currently have a listing? We wanna bring on another, uh, staff member for downtown.
A, so, as a requirement of this program, that again, that the DDA has gotten us involved in, it does require a specific Main Street Coordinator program. That position would ultimately be a self-type funded position through the programs that they, that they facilitate. But you're talking a year or two down, down the road. That position would ultimately be a self-type funded position through the programs that they, that they facilitate, but you're talking a year or two down, down the road.
Yeah, and my only concern is because I've, I've heard from a lot of the downtown owners saying they're not hearing from the city, that they don't feel the city is helping them downtown and we see more vacancies downtown. I'm not sure I want to spend the money or approve spending the money for a staff member to go out when I haven't seen the results of the first time we spent over five thousand dollars. And I'm not hearing that there was more outreach to owners since that time. I think we need to prove our salt in our face-to-face, hand-to-hand with the people on our Main Street first before we say we're going to spend money to get ideas.
I think when she traveled the last time, Councilmember King, um, somebody from the DDA or from the Visitors Bureau also went. And it was very, um, there was a lot of information that they gathered as they grow in these roles within this program and they felt like it was a, a really good conference. So, I mean, as we think about strengthening our positions to support this program in downtown, I would just like us to think about that carefully. Um, I understand your concern, um, but I also think, you know, some of the, some of the shortfalls we see, I think it's important to invest in our employees to give them the education that they need to support the programs.
And I absolutely agree with that. Have we, I think it was Mr. Wallace and Danielle who went last time. And what I'm hearing that they're still not getting outreach from the city. For them. That's, I'm, I'm for education, but I think we need to show we're supporting. You can get great ideas, but if you're not interacting with the people who are writing the checks to pay the rent, to pay the electricity, to have the inventory, worried about parking those things, I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse.
I think we're, um, developing an employee. Um, all the things that Steve said, um, uh, are definitely important, but I think this is a good opportunity for Danielle and this will help us, um, to do the things that you're saying, so.
Can I, would someone consider a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request for the community development coordinator as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Boss, Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
No.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Wow.
And, um, I would ask everyone to, um, stay quiet, please. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. Thank you, um, Mayor, members of the city council. Um, next item, PFAS update. Um, there is, um, a lot that I'm going to try to cover in as concise of a way as I can. Um, it's going to bridge over a couple of, or I should say probably a few different, different topics, and I am going to be asking, uh, our utilities director to also chime in as well as our, uh, city attorney, uh, for different, different pieces of this. But I'm going to attempt to do, uh, somewhat of a, of an overview, at least in the beginning. Clearly, there's a lot of context out there regarding, uh, PFAS in our environment, uh, and, uh, a lot of concerns, uh, within the community about what our level of engagement is or isn't. Um, I think there's some confusion out there in regard to what the city is doing, whether it's under our generic label, City of Cadillac, or L D F A, which is, is, you guys know, stands for Local Development Finance Authority. And certainly a lot of conversation about what was or wasn't said a half a dozen your, years or so ago. And I think that it's important for, um, me to say that the, that the super fund documents and the charge of the L D F A and all of its testing that it's been responsible to be doing has everything to do with, uh, trichloroethylene, T C E, as well as hexavalent chrome, uh, and not, uh, and not PFAS. Now, skipping, skipping ahead, and I will be the first to say that I'm probably not doing a great service by skipping six years in my next comment to where we are now, or five years, whatever the timeframe is, but skipping ahead to where we are now. Um, it, I can absolutely say nothing is being hidden. There is, there is no conspiracy to not share with the public or to share with the city council where things are at. In fact, we have created, uh, on our website, essentially a depository of information titled PFAS Resources, uh, that you could find right on our, right on our homepage that'll link people to the latest and greatest information as soon as we get it from the state of Michigan, uh, Department of P, of PFAS Action Response, or M Part. Uh, on where they're seeing PFAS being detected in private wells throughout the city and the greater Cadillac area, meaning in areas also outside of the city. Uh, the information, uh, on that site also includes a, a very newly released, uh, frequently asked questions document by the state of Michigan, uh, as well, talking about what to do if you have it, what does it mean, how do you get help and resources? Uh, additionally, we have information on that site as to how people can get informa- you know, help from us in terms of access to, uh, to, uh, drink, you know, to drinking water. Uh, in fact, our utilities department is doing, uh, deliveries, uh, of, of water to those that are within the study areas, uh, should they, should they request it. It's important to know that, uh, we are also in the process of, uh, getting ready to bid out, uh, an infrastructure project for Marathon Drive. Um, the, uh, city, uh, engineering has, uh, put together, uh, a design, uh, for that infrastructure to bring a water main, uh, down Marathon Drive. And I think, um, without trying to, to cloud anything, but just, just to, just to explain, um, it's, it's important for the public to understand, for, for the city to understand that, you know, the, the local unit of government doesn't design or develop our neighborhoods. You know, we have design standards and development standards and, and I, I cannot tell you what those design or development standards were back when Marathon Drive was developed. I don't, I don't know, sitting here right now, why there, there isn't a paved street there or why there isn't, you know, curbs or, or sidewalks or, or whatever the case may be. I, I can say that if, if a developer comes to the city today to develop an area that is otherwise not developed, um, as a part of our administrative site plan and review, we would say yes, you need to have paved roads. And you, you know, you know, need to have sidewalks to link to other sidewalks and lighting and, you know, water and sewer infrastructure under the ground that would be at your costs. That we would then assume maintenance responsibility and ownership of when it's done. Using, as a sort of gross example, because it's very large in nature, the quote-unquote Cadillac Junction or Terry D property is a, for instance. That developer put in all of that public infrastructure at their cost and then deed of it all over to the city for maintenance and upkeep and whatnot from, you know, now until the end of time. Focusing in with the microscope now on Marathon Drive, it's, it's obviously clear, based on the studies that the state of Michigan have conducted, that there is PFAS detection in that area. Some of that detection is above what the state has identified as, uh, their safe drinking water, uh, threshold. Some of that detection is below. Regardless, wherever anybody is in terms of that detection, the state does allow people to go and get, um, a filter, um, at the state's cost, as well as replacement filters at their cost. Uh, but that, you know, won't necessarily be a long-term, uh, solution or a long-term fix versus being able to connect, uh, to, uh, to public infrastructure. And so as we look at that long-term fix, that long-term solution for public infrastructure, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that I have support of through the city council, you know, is regarding, um, the, the, those anticipated costs. So, you know, we have the ability to use leftover, um, federal COVID dollars or ARPA dollars from the American Rescue Plan to be able to fund, uh, what could be approximately, we, we're thinking about a three hundred thousand dollar project, uh, to bring infrastructure to Marathon Drive. I don't, I don't need a firm commitment necessarily tonight because I don't, I don't have it bid out yet, um, but we will very, very soon. And I just wanted to essentially get a feel from the board in terms of feedback, um, and I'm not asking for you to jump in right now, but whether or not you would be supportive of us ultimately using those dollars, uh, to, to pay for it. And that, and that cost, um, which again, we're estimating to be about three hundred thousand, would not only be, uh, the cost of putting the, um, the main, right, this, the, the main infrastructure in the ground, but we also believe that would, that would cover the cost of the connections to, uh, to the individual, you know, to the individual homes. Um, but this issue isn't just in the city of Cadillac. This issue is also outside of our borders. Now, we have no authority, uh, to force or do anything, um, to anyone outside of our corporate jurisdiction. We have reached out, uh, to our corporate neighbors to the north, uh, and advised how we do have a water main along Seneca, uh, and that certainly we'd be willing to explore, if, if they're willing to do so, um, an extension of that main at, at their cost, they being the, the township's cost, and how they defray that, that's, that's their business, not, not the city's. Um, to provide access to, um, water, municipal water infrastructure, uh, to that residential neighborhood that's north of town. Um, obviously, it would be ultimately a policy decision of the city council in terms of whether or not, um, any type of, of, uh, land transfer agreement would be required. However, looking at how the city has not required such an agreement in the past when it comes to environmental issues and thinking about the, the, the methodology in place that we provide sewage treatment for the, uh, area around Lake Mitchell or the Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority, I, I, I think it's probably a pretty fair assumption that we would simply be willing to extend the infrastructure at their cost and have an intergovernmental agreement in place that would allow them to access, them being their, their residents, to access the water. It would be metered just like anybody else, uh, and they would pay, excuse me, the same rates that, you know, that we, we charge our own folks. So, um, I don't mean to jump too far ahead, but I wanted to say publicly how that olive branch has been, has been extended and frankly, we're just kind of waiting to hear, um, to hear back what, what the response will be and if, if there's something that we should be working on in terms of, of getting that infrastructure, uh, put in place. Um, I think, you know, I think that it's i- important to try to, to also, uh, understand too that the, the, um, uh, the draft ordinance, and we're going to focus a little bit more on this in a minute here, but the, the draft water connection ordinance that was in the public packet, um, you know, a couple of weeks ago and is still in the public packet, packet tonight, was put there for, for the purpose of starting the conversation. So as city council knows, when you guys see an ordinance in your packet, I mean, you tell me if I'm wrong here, but I think nine point nine out of ten times, it's in the packet typically being asked for consideration of the setting of a public hearing. You know, it's already gone through another board or commission, it's already gone through a review process, it's already matured in a sense to where, okay, now it's time to, to have city council invite the public to come for a public hearing to solicit more feedback. This, this is not that. This is not being asked to be set for a public hearing. This is just simply, hey, you know, this has been conversation now. We have had a conversation with this body or, or frankly, even, um, a variation of this body now over, over several years about, hey, you know, maybe someday we should look at having an ordinance in place that requires people to connect to our infrastructure, if, if our infrastructure is even there for people to connect to. There are a whole host of different policy level questions that can be raised. Does the city pay for the connection? Does this, first of all, does the city even want the ordinance in place? Secondly, if the city wants the ordinance in place, other than of, you know, other than, than facilitating the financing of, of, of making sure that areas have access to the water main, which this ordinance would presumably be just for areas where that main is already there, because we're not talking about building in mains anywhere else. Um, does the city look at, at a cost share? Do we say, look, the first X amount of dollars the city covers, uh, the balance is covered by the property owner, um, and the property owner can pay it outright or can pay it over the next five years? Or, I mean, there's a whole host of different ways of doing it. Does the city say, look, you know, because, you know, we are, are now experiencing a situation where people that are on their own private infrastructure are having contamination issues, do we say, okay, to, to help protect you and to help protect the environment, we want to make sure that you can certify to us on an annual basis and we create some type of a regulatory program where we say, give us a, a copy of your certified lab results that your private well tested great, and if so, you're, you know, you're good to go for another year or however long the, the, the test, you know, results are certified to be good for. And we don't require a connection, you know, uh, uh, and maybe we never require a connection until such time that that property transfers. I mean, there's, there's probably a dozen, if not more, different kinds of ways of doing it. By no means is this being presented tonight as some type of final version. It was just simply a draft to get the conversation going and to start getting some feedback from council and the public. So, um, with that, I would like to kick, uh, Jeff, our utilities director, the, essentially the floor, if you wouldn't mind, maybe going through, uh, some of the information, some of the bullets that we have created.
Marcus, and I don't mean to interrupt you, and again, I apologize, because I'm not an expert on this, but it was kind of a word salad for me. If I'm hearing the message that we want to know, that the public knows, and make sure we're straightforward, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, number one, PFAS is an extremely important issue, period, across the board. Doesn't matter where you live in the state of Michigan. Two, the city of Cadillac wants to take action in relation to issues in well water in relation to PFAS, but it's going to have to be looked at in relation to the industrial area with the L D F A versus the other private wells. The point is, yes, something's got to be done and we need to be looking into those solutions. Three, we have a potential ordinance that we want public feedback on. I have already gotten, I think other council members have gotten emails from two different groups. One group, uh, is testing their wells and they have no PFAS and they want to know, is there a way for us to keep our wells? And we need feedback from them and we need to know what the process is for them to keep their wells and, and they've given us the tests that are zero. So how do we deal with that? Two, we clearly have people that have wells within the city of Cadillac that have PFAS and we have to figure out how to put in the infrastructure for them in a manner that's fair to all. The key point is, we know it's important. We know it's critical. Uh, the, kind of the process, which I know you're getting, the more important messages is the people know we're addressing.
Right, and, you know, I, I mean, we started with, with this, um, but I was anticipating, you know, we would look at current situation, right? So this is what we have. We have this many people on well, we have, you know, in the areas that we don't have city infrastructure. Um, but what are all the options? You know, this is, this is only one of the options, right? And so, um, seeing it more collectively, um, so that we know how many people we have on wells, we know where our infrastructure is today, where's the opportunity, infrastructure could go in, and what's the expectation if the infrastructure goes in? You know, I, I would rather look at it holistically and really understand what the options are, rather than coming out with, you know, this and people are going, wait a minute, I don't, I don't want to hook up to this. You know, we need to have, we need to have conversation around all of the options. And I know that's a big elephant.
No, 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 and that's, um, maybe I didn't, like, as council member said, word salad, maybe it got lost in my word salad. But that's, I mean, we do know, right? I mean, we know where people live that are on private wells and whether or not those people either do or don't have access to our public utility. There is a concentration of people that have PFAS detected in their private wells that are on Marathon Drive that do not have access to a private utility, or excuse me, the public utility. So we, we have already sort of jumped the gun in terms of getting engineering to prepare, uh, uh, engineer documents for bidding purposes, assuming that I'm not hearing anything from council tonight that says, don't do that, um, so that we can get that out to bid and get that infrastructure built. Um, so that we can get that out to bid and get that infrastructure built. Um, regarding the other areas, and Jeff can clean up what I'm saying, of people that are not on a, um, uh, excuse me, people that are on private wells that are not on, um, city, city water. A lot of those people have access today to connect to city water. There may only be a couple that don't. And so the, the, essentially the easy solution to that would be to offer the same, whatever the same policy is for those people that would be connected to Marathon.
Well, please, I, I wasn't suggesting that you guys didn't know where it was. What I was asking is that I would like to see a thorough summary for us to understand all of that too. And what are the options for each of those areas?
And, and to share with the public so that we get their feedback.
So, I, I definitely appreciate the, um, you know, as you said, jumping the gun on Marathon. I think when it comes to the bigger things that are going to take a lot of time, um, if we're not ready with design plans, whether we, um, with, whether we put this in as soon as possible or whether we prepare and present it for funding or look for additional funding, you know, the bigger the project, the earlier you need to get started on it. So, uh, you know, as quickly as, and, and even, you know, the ordinance about, um, making people, you know, hook up. I'm not sure if that'll ever be appropriate. I'm not sure if it'll be appropriate in limited areas in town. But I think, um, as quickly as we can introduce tools and get them out there, um, we can start to think about them. We can start to put the, put in the pieces of a puzzle, um, and get feedback. I think, um, what the mayor's saying too, uh, wh- when we have a PFAS update next time, which I, I'm assuming we're going to hopefully have, um, you know, progress at every, at every meeting, enough to talk about, but we were talking about the two hundred and twenty some odd wells, you know, if we could see them on a map. Um, obviously, you may divide those up into several, um, several groups. The group that's next to the water main, um, the group that doesn't have a water main but needs it, and maybe the group that'll never get hooked up to city water because they're testing clean. But once we see that map, I think we can visualize, we can put together a holistic strategy, like you said. Um, some things are going to have to be put in place, um, before the whole plan is in place. And if we decide to move forward quickly on Marathon Drive because of the point that we, um, have enough information to make that decision without the whole plan, that, that's fine. So I definitely appreciate you preparing that. But, um, the next time I, I would like to see, maybe even in a visual map form. Um, and I know I have seen a, a map of the city's wells, I think on the state website, but, you know, a, a presentation, um, from Jeff on, on the categories that we have in town would really, would really help to, you know, um, you know, finalize the, the groups of, the groups of solutions that we're going to have. So, thank you.
No, that, that's fine. That's easy to do. Plotting it on a map should be, should be easy to do. Um, may I just?
Plotting it on a map and with the available options today or in the future.
I just want to be, be clear though, you know, I could ask council if you want to, to make a motion to support, but I, I, I just want to make sure that the consensus is that you're supportive of us bidding out Marathon so we can get that project going sooner, you know.
I think we have to know the cost of that.
Yeah, that's a part of, that's a part of understanding the options is to get that bidding done. I mean, you're telling us that it's, it's three hundred thousand dollars, you know, I mean, I mean, I don't know how long, you know, I, that sounds like a reasonable figure for what we're talking about. So, I mean, that'd be nice to get the actual figure on that.
Yeah.
No, I, I would agree. So, uh, Jeff, I wanted you to hit some of the highlights.
All right. Uh, first on the, if I can go back to Marathon, we did get the state permit on that already and we do have it already engineered. So we can bid it out and get your cost really quick. It, it's moving lightning fast for a, a project here. Right now, the state's been really helpful to get that up permitting process done quickly. So.
So, so maybe, maybe Marathon, when we look at Marathon, yes, we can go ahead and we can get that bid, but what are the other options for those people? Of, you know, is it you have to hook up? Is it, no, you don't have to hook up if? I mean, what are the choices that can be made in that area?
Yes. I mean, there, there are, there will, like with anything, be policy discussions that council will have to have.
Yep.
If, if the city is requiring connections, using Marathon as an example, are we going to say Marathon is, is a special area, given the unique circumstances, that it's been identified by the state as a hot, as a hot sum? And therefore, we are going to look at covering those connection costs or covering those connection costs up to X amount. I mean, there's, again, I, I, I can't tell you what the right way is. I could give you options.
That's all I'm asking for, right?
And then, and I was not trying to get too much into the weeds tonight, just to tell you that we are working on it. So.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And then, uh, second, we have not started delivering water yet to people. We, we still getting the letter out. We do have the water still available at the, at the plant. People are coming in. It should be, it should be this week. We should be starting the deliveries.
I thought we had already started that.
No, we have not. And Marcus, I mean, he said that, maybe he thought it. I just wanted to correct that because we have not started. We are going to start that, but the letter has not gone out yet. So just, I, I want, if, if that's been misinterpreted, that's my fault.
Yeah, sorry, I thought we said.
I, I, I just don't want, uh, hang Marcus over that.
And do people, do people?
People have been able to go get water at the plant.
Yep. Every day, we're, we have somebody there every day and we have people there on the weekends and we had the hours we put up and so that's still going on, but it's, uh, there's a lot of time where the, there's nobody there. So we thought it'd be better for us just to go and see who wants it and bring it out to them.
Did we get the, did we get the big containers that we ordered?
We did get the bulk containers and we do still have, uh, Ice Mountain Water, uh, I don't know, forty, fifty gallons.
So people are having a choice to pick up, um, the, the Ice Mountain Water or to fill up the big container?
Uh, we've just been doing the Ice Mountain Water. When we get lower, I think we'll probably switch it over and then, uh, if you're a person that has, uh, needs where you can't lift up a big bulk jug, we'd save some pallets for those people and then take them the bottled water and the people that have the means that they can, uh, redistribute it, then we'd let them have the bulk water. So we don't want, you know, obviously, uh, somebody that's a hundred years old trying to get a five gallon bucket and sling it around.
Even somebody that's seventy years.
I wanted to make sure it was old enough that nobody got infected, so. Um, so with some PFAS stuff, I guess I'd start with this, uh, the gentleman here asked about the, uh, wells over on Eighth Street, uh, if they were ever tested, that we should test them. They were tested before we closed them down, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. We, the state made us start testing all municipalities in Michigan, not just Cadillac, but all municipalities had to start testing their water wells and they tested PFAS free for water every time we tested over at the Eighth Street. At, well, all of our wellfields have tested PFAS free since we start testing eighteen and we have to test them all annually. We, we shut down, uh, Eighth Street in twenty-two and then we've started testing at forty-four. So even though, uh, from sixty-three to, um, twenty-two, it was in the industrial area, for the time that we have testing there, there was no PFAS in the water at the old, old city wellfield. And then, uh, obviously in the two new wellfields, there's no, uh, PFAS in that water. So just want to say that. And we do test annually. We're mandated by the state. We report it to the state. It's in our C C R. Um, so it, it's right there for the public to get. Um, that's a requirement for us. Uh, the wastewater plant, it's, uh, is tested three times a year, prescribed months that the state of Michigan prescribes that we test the PFAS. Uh, and we're actually lower than the state drinking water standards and we're actually lower than the federal drinking water standards on the discharge. Now, I would not drink the wastewater discharge, but the PFAS levels are lower than the state standards and, and lower than the federal standards. The one, I just looked at the last three, three, uh, tests we did, which would be the last years, and those are all lower. Uh, at the wastewater plant, uh, we do produce a biosolids. We produce an E Q, exceptional quality biosolids. We're one of four plants in Michigan that produces that. That means that we, where everybody else produces a class B, that's a higher, uh, level. You can have more contaminants, more, more stuff in it. Ours is more regulated. We have half the metals in it and, and, uh, we actually have to have a lower, uh, uh, we have to have a PFAS below twenty parts per billion in it. Uh, we're, we're at one point five and two point three, uh, for, um, PFOS and PFAS in that. So we're, we're well below, again, we're reporting this all to the state. So the state has all our levels and we're well below what's allowed. And, and with the class A, we're actually a lot better than what other cities are. There's, I don't know, three, four hundred plants probably putting biosolids out and we're one of four that's putting out the class A material. So, um, and the discharge from the L D F A well, the last time we tested it and we're going to test it again, it was below the E P A uh, drinking water standards for that, for the PFAS of the L D F A discharge. Now, since that time, we've rerouted some of the wa- well, we've re-well, we've put new carbon in and, uh, so that should actually be lower because the well that had a lot of PFAS was going through carbon that was spent. Now we're getting results where there's nothing and we're actually going to reroute a couple wells. We have the ability and put that through carbon, so it should even lower the levels, uh, more. So, uh, just a couple of points on the L D F A, I guess. Uh, the cleanup began in ninety-six. It was locally funded. Um, uh, we had stripping towers, activated carbon and a soil vapor extraction, uh, system. The soil vapor extraction system was over at Kaiser. In two thousand and sixteen, the EPA said the soil vapor extraction system had met its goal and they allowed that to be shut down. Um, so since that, the treatment, since the treatment has started, we have gotten thirty-seven thousand pounds of volatile organic compounds out of the water. We've, we've gotten it and cleaned up. So, uh, the first year, we did about six ton, uh, which would be about twelve thousand. This last year, we did about forty, fifty pounds because the water coming into the plant is so much cleaner than it was back in the day. So, so the VOCs, because the plant was only made for VOCs and hexavalent chrome, it's doing the job on those two, on those two parameters that it was built for. You know, since that time, we have asked this, you know, feds, hey, where are we at, uh, in the closeout of the whole system? And they're working us, with us and we're seeing where we're at the, uh, when we meet our cleanup goals. And one of the things is the, the PFAS that they're out there testing for right now, seeing how much is out there and where it's at. So, um, again, that's not part of our permit. That's not something we're treating for. That's not something in our current N P D S permit. But it is something that we, we recognize, something we're looking at. Something maybe in a future permit, the, the state will put on us because the state does the N P D S permit. But currently, that we have no limit on it, but currently we are discharging it lower than the new federal drinking water standards for PFAS. Uh, for VOCs and hexavalent chrome, we're discharging those at zero. There is none in the water. So it has met, uh, the cleanup goals for the discharge for those two parameters. Um, water system, uh, the first water we had in Cadillac came out of Lake Cadillac. We pumped it out of the lake. We had it in wooden water mains. We had, uh, uh, points on the corner where everybody would come with their bucket. You'd get your bucket of water and you'd take it to your house. And sometimes when you did your bucket of water, you'd get algae. Sometimes you'd get a clam. Sometimes you'd get a minnow. It didn't matter. It was just pumped straight out of the lake. Um, in about.
Trigex for that?
Yeah, I don't know what they did back in the day, but that's the stories I've heard. So, uh, and the first wooden water mains were, uh, uh, first water mains were wood. So once in a while, if you see a project out there and they're digging, they might dig up a wooden water main that they used to use. It was a low pressured system. You know, had lake water. Uh, since that time, they, uh, down by the boat launch here, but across from Consumer Power, they put in a water plant down there, pumped it out with real pumps. We went with a metal cast iron and then to ductile iron pipes in the ground and we actually routed it to people's houses. Where you didn't have the community sources, you actually got it into your house. Um, our plant is a class, uh, D two S one plant, which means it is the second highest, uh, for the limited treatment. We do a very limited treatment, second highest in the state. And we have one of them, uh, S one, which is, uh, the top sophistication on the delivery system of the water. So, um, uh, let's see, in two thousand and twelve, uh, we built Crosby Wellfield. At that time, we only had Eighth Street. We built Crosby, took half the flow over to Crosby, half stayed at, uh, the old wellfield. Again, we did all the testing and that and everything was good. In two thousand and twenty-two, we moved the other half over to, um, Forty-four Road. We did that. We split the wellfield because we had all of our wellfield in one area. And if something bad ever happened to it, the city of Cadillac would be without water. Both of our wellfields have the ability to serve all of Cadillac its water needs. Either one of them could do that. So if something happened bad at one wellfield, a, a pump blew up, a main blew up or whatever, we could actually serve all of Cadillac with the other wellfield. And then we would repair whatever happened at, to the original wellfield. Uh, in two thousand and eighteen, I don't know if people are, know, know this, we won the best tasting water in Michigan in two thousand and eighteen. In, uh, two thousand and eighteen, we also came in, in the top five of the nation for our taste of our water. Now, a lot of people will say, well, my water just, it's terrible. Everybody, every system, somebody has the oldest pipe out there and we haven't gotten to change that pipe yet. When we do, you'll have good water, but we're always changing pipe. You'll always see a street tore up. You'll always see us working out there. So, um, I, I feel bad for the person with the old pipe, but it's not the water. It's that it's getting stuff off the old pipe that's still in the ground. So, um, some wastewater facts, uh, we've been treating sewage for over a hundred years. First, we had a little, uh, septic tank that all of Cadillac went into. Then they had a big hexagon building and they had septic fields. In nineteen sixty-two, they built our current plant. Uh, it is a class A advanced tertiary treatment plant. And that means that we have three levels of treatment. Most places only have two levels of treatment. Uh, we have three levels of treatment. And, uh, we actually go out to a stream that becomes a trout stream. Uh, uh, so, um, we produce three things there. We, well, four things and one's a waste product. We produce a grit, which is just marbles, cell phones, dentures, whatever you flush down that we can't reuse, it goes into the grit and we, we have to take to landfill. We produce cleaned water, uh, hun, you know, two point five million gallons of cleaned water a day. We produce methane, which we use to offset our energy costs at the plant. We reheat our digester with it. And we produce biosolids, our class A exceptional quality biosolids, which is a fertilizer. Um, we're, again, we're one of four plants that does that. We have sixty-three miles of sewer and seventy-four miles of water mains that we keep. So, you, when you think about that, that's a lot of area for us to cover. And a water main or a sewer never plugs up at one in the afternoon. It's always two in the morning. So, just, I don't know why, I guess, people hate us. And, uh, I think that's about it.
Just wanted to mention, Jeff, um, if you did mention it and catch it, but detection of PFAS in our water system?
Zero. Again, I, I did mention it, but I will mention it again. Non-detect. We've tested the Eighth Street. We've tested the Forty-four Road. We've tested Crosby. Every test we've ever done has come back non-detect. We are mandated by the state to test it annually. Some people that have detections, they have to test it more frequently. We're mandated to do it annually. We have to report that to the state. It is non-detect. It's in at the state. You can look at the state. I, I don't know what more I can say. Our, our municipal water is PFAS free.
I'd like to segue from that point, um, to Mike Homier. Uh, Mike and I had a conversation, uh, with a colleague of his maybe a week or so ago regarding an opportunity to reserve a spot in a nationwide class action PFAS lawsuit. Would you like to give just a quick brief as to what that is, Mike, with the three M?
Yeah, there's, um, there are a couple, uh, class actions, well, a class action that involves multiple defendants, uh, three M, uh, Tyco, and there's one other.
DuPont?
Um, yeah, maybe DuPont. Um, in any event, I'm working with, um, cities across, uh, Michigan on their PFAS contamination, mostly, um, most of the claim, the phase one claimants were, uh, drinking water contamination, which you don't have, which Jeff said is non-detect. The second phase two claimants are phase two claimants. Um, Cadillac is in that category. And so, uh, I set up a meeting with, uh, council that we're working with, who is, um, uh, class counsel in New Orleans. And so we had a brief description, um, put him in touch with Marcus so that there may be some funding opportunities based on those class action elements. Um, the liability or the, the, uh, my understanding is the liability portion is done. Now it's just kind of resolving those claims because it's, as you might imagine, it's nationwide. And so there are a lot of claims and there are scoring. And so, there are a lot of claims and there are scoring involved and then a distribution of assets. So, but as I said, we, we went through the phase-one claimants. We made sure that Cadillac was not on that list, otherwise we would have filed a phase-one claim for the city. And then, now we're in the phase-two claims, which have to be filed by the, next year, by next year. So, I don't anticipate that there's going to be a whole lot of movement on the short term of that. But there may be some additional money out there related to these class action lawsuits.
And would that be like applied to people that aren't on the municipal system to help get them on the municipal?
Yeah, I'm not sure yet how the, how that scoring's going to work on groundwater contamination. But, but yeah, I mean, those funds might be used. And, you know, we've been involved with a number of PFOS cases, both in Cascade Township related to Gjeldar Ford Airport and contaminated a bunch of wells east of the airport. And I think that was a thirteen million dollar project to extend municipal water to serve those properties. As well as down in Kalamazoo County, when the city of parchment had PFOS in their system. Our client was one of the townships who was also served with that system. And so, you know, we've been dealing with these all over the state. It's not unique to here. But it's an important issue everywhere in the state right now.
And along that same line of thought, very fortunate to have some really good resources in our local level of finance authority that have reached out with our utilities director to start tracking down some additional outside funding grants that some of, some other Michigan communities have been successful in getting. Now, everyone's PFOS experiences and situations are different. I cannot sit here and tell the public or tell the city council that there's any guarantee of acquiring any of these outside resources. But if there is the ability to do so, we're going to obviously do everything we can to get it. I can also not say that it would be retroactive to anything that we do. If the timing works out that it can pay for a project, then fantastic. If it doesn't, then, you know, it could be used perhaps for a future project that we don't yet have on the books. But it's something that we're, we're certainly going to be exploring as we move on. Mike, is there anything that you wanted to add, further clarification regarding that draft connection ordinance? Or do you think I covered it?
Yeah, only that, you know, we, we've drafted a multitude of these ordinances over time for our clients. This is no different. It's sort of based on, the Public Health Code has a mandatory connection provision for connections to public wastewater systems. And that, that's why what you see in here kind of mirrors the Public Health Code on the wastewater facilities. Generally, they go hand in hand, right? Because you don't want to put in infrastructure and then have not people connect to it. Because it's one of the ways in which you fund those projects. It has to be. You know, we can talk about funding options and maybe grant opportunities. But, you know, the city is bound in the Uniform Budgeting Act to have a balanced budget, which means then you, you can devote public money from it, but it's taxpayer money, make no mistake. The city doesn't make money. The city is not in the business of making money. So, you know, when you talk about utilities, the funding is, is derived from a couple of different sources. User fees for the service itself, right? Part of which then goes into operation and maintenance over time to maintain the system. Grant opportunities to the extent that you can get them, mostly from the federal government. Some state government grant opportunities. Or low-interest loans, either through the USDA or from the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. So, but all of those are going to be driven in some way, shape, or form by then fees for using that service. And so, this is, this ordinance is a starting point for one of those options, which is mandatory connection, which mirrors the Public Health Code on wastewater, public wastewater systems. But I agree that you are free to decide what your policy is going to be with regard to those connections. Whether it's two hundred feet, four hundred feet, whether it's testing. The problem with the testing is it gets lost over time and, and that's a real issue, right? Over a long period of time administratively, it's, those tend to get lost about, you know, who's testing their well and whether it was done, whether results were submitted, especially when you have a large number. So, but as to the policy itself, you're not, you're not required to have this ordinance, nor are you required to make it mandatory in the way that the draft is done. There's a whole host of policy decisions that the council can make here.
I have a question for Jeff though, really quick, about the biosolids. So, are all of our biosolids applied as fertilizer?
What?
I said, are all the biosolids, like all the biosolids we generate, like, applied as fertilizer?
Yes, all of it is. We actually pay, we actually pay to truck it out to farmers' fields. We actually apply it as a Class B biosolids, which has slope restrictions. They're farther back from the property line, stuff like that, even though it's Class A. And it just gives us that extra insurance that if something bad happened and they did apply it on a slope that was too steep, it is a Class A. And, and there is no slope restriction on a Class A. But we still treat it as a Class B, just because they're, they're more restrictive on the, how you can apply it. But it is a Class A. We, I have the letter from two thousand, we've been Class A since two thousand and three, except for like three, three exceptions. One, we had, we had to take it to the landfill, everything because of a.
So, and it, and it makes sense that we, we pay to distribute that because if, so if you didn't distribute it, you would be taking all of it to landfill. You would be incinerating it. You would be doing what?
If we didn't distribute it, I'd estimate about a, I'd need about a three percent increase on rates to take that to landfill.
Just for that, right?
Just for that.
So, the cost, aside, aside from the rate increase, the cost though is like, it's double the cost or triple the cost or?
Oh, at least triple. It's a lot more. And, and again, it'd have to go to landfill and you're just, it would, it would, you would see it in your utility bill.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
So, Jeff, this, this FAQ that, that's in the packet.
Yes.
Where can people find this? Because we talked about that there's a PFOS information place on the main page of the website.
It's right there.
Is this also right there?
Yep. Again, as Marcus has said, we're so transparent. Anything we get from the state, we put on that site. And we also, obviously, the state has it on the M part site. But as soon as we get the information, we're putting it on that site just for the public to go and, and see. So, I don't know, you know, if we get it, they get it. And so, it is there. It is for everybody to use. We put the heat map on, once we got it last week, the new heat map, we put that on. We're putting everything out there for the public to see.
Just go to the website. You could see everything.
Well, if you go to website utilities, it's under utilities PFOS. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
I can sit here all night and continue to kind of talk and chat, but we can, we can move on.
It's a favor of mayor.
No, it's all right. But I mean, there's obviously a lot of good information that's out there. May I move to the next?
Yes, please.
Under introduction of ordinances, resolution introduced ordinance amending the city zoning map regarding one twenty-eight East Pine Street and to set a public hearing for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. I think, listening to especially the public feedback earlier tonight, which was all good to hear, I understand whether you want to call it confusion, frustration, combination of both, well, like, what the heck? How come this is back here? You know, didn't the city, you know, sue these people to get them to stop the use? And the answer to that is, is yeah. Yeah, we did. You know, I, I don't want to pretend to know what was going through the minds of the folks that owned the property. They continued to own the property when they initially, frankly, decided to ask for forgiveness instead of permission initially. But that's essentially what they did, was they asked for forgiveness versus for permission and continued to operate their facility as a short-term rental facility until such time that we filed suit. Mike Homier can certainly provide all the details that I may be missing. But they, they then eventually stopped that use that we settled with them to have them stop. Waited a few months and then essentially have hit the reboot button to say, okay, you know, we still own the property. We still find value in having this property here in Cadillac. You know, it's in the OS district right now. It's not in a residential district. It's been said publicly by both Planning Commission and by city council that, you know, the specific location of this property would be suitable to be used as a short-term rental. However, the rules weren't followed right and that's why it got gummed up in the process and that's why it was not approved. They waited however long they waited. I think it was said tonight by a member or two of the public, it was about four months. And then they, they came back to us and said, we'd like to go through the process again. That process starts back with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission had a hearing and approved moving it forward to city council with a recommendation and the affirmative. And so, now it's back before city council, essentially, to continue that process, which is tonight, the request to set a public hearing for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five accordingly.
Well, you know, as you know, I sit on the Planning Commission. And those very question, these very same questions that we heard tonight were also, the Planning Commission asked those same questions. And based on the presentation that was done and the homework that they did, et cetera, et cetera, I think it's, it's good for it to come back before the council and before the public so that they can have all of the information that the Planning Commission got, so it can be considered.
I appreciate you mentioning that. We also put a little blip right on our homepage of a depository of information regarding this request.
Good.
We normally don't separate out, you know, like, specific topics. You know, we would say, hey, it's, it's online. You have to go grab it out of the agenda. But knowing that, that there's just a lot of conversation and dialogue on this. If you go right under, is it Owen New and News and Noteworthy, I think?
It's right at the top where it says News and Noteworthy.
So, anybody can go out and see what the Planning Commission saw?
Yep, yep, the whole, the whole request, the packet, all the information the Planning Commission has, it's all right there. So, separate from the rest of their business.
Okay. Would someone entertain the motion? Set a hearing?
I'm, I'm concerned. I, I just, there was such bad behavior and we spent money to enforce this ordinance. They ignored that ordinance. I, I read the article in the paper and I'm concerned that the owner saying, it was like my dog ate my homework. Oh, I didn't get your letters. I was moving. I'm, I'm concerned over the enforcement. I, I hear with people, I say, I think we need to let this issue die. I, I would not be in favor of moving it forward.
You know, I, I do like to keep an open mind about a lot of things. Contrary to what a lot of people think, you know, we don't always get up here with our, with our decisions, you know, firm. Sometimes it's okay to wait. Sometimes it's okay to entertain an idea without accepting it. And, you know, one, one thing I won't entertain is short-term rentals in our neighborhoods. But this isn't in our neighborhood. This house is zoned between OS and, and B two. So, I did give it a lot of consideration and, you know, I've gone back and forth. But I just can't get to a place where I feel comfortable with this, you know, after, after what we've been through. And I, you know, I, the Planning Commission does a fantastic job. I, I respect the work they do and, and the questions they put forward and the, and the thought that they put in. But I'm, but this one, again, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to vote to move it to public hearing either, which I have sometimes in the past been in favor of, of giving an item a public hearing, even if, whether I was for or against it. But I guess I, I kind of want this one to just go away as well. So, I'm, I'm going to vote no for this one.
Yeah, I feel, I feel the same way. I just, perhaps if it was a different owner at some point to bring it forward, look at that, because I think it would be, it is in a good position for one to be in. But I just, you know, that's just, it's just rewarding bad behaviors, y'all said, so I would.
And if we have, I mean, if, if we redo the zoning, I, I think initially too, they're, they're asking for us to change things, you know, just for them. And we certainly listen to those requests and, and we, you know, entertain a lot of them, you know, and sometimes that makes people mad. But, you know, if this, if this ends up in, in the long term being one, you know, that's, you know, that's not a disaster. But I'm, I'm not willing to do it this way. So.
How do we communicate that back to the Planning Commission?
Mike is double-checking just the process piece right now in terms of how city council should articulate the motion.
Do we even, do we need a motion?
Well, I think, you know, typically, what happens is you have a, an application which anybody can file, right? At the Planning Commission level saying, I'd like to rezone my property. The Planning Commission's role then is to make a recommendation to the city council. The city council's role then is to make a decision. Your process is a little different, only because before you can adopt an ordinance, you have to have the introduction, public hearing, and then consideration. So, my recommendation would be to set it for that public hearing so that you can then decide whatever it is you're going to decide and specify the reasons for that. Because here now, I'm not sure we can do that.
I, I'll tell you what, I'm going to make a motion because I think it's our job to either say, we'll adopt it instead of for public hearing or not. I'll make a motion that we do not move forward with the public hearing on this application.
And we can't, we can't decline the request before we have a public hearing. We can just not move forward with the public hearing.
The problem is it's hanging out there not as a denial, but as, we're not going to move it forward on a public hearing.
I would rather have a public hearing and deny it.
Because there are specific standards that you have to meet when you're looking at whether or not to rezone property.
Yep. So, it, it, I am, I think to have the public hearing, but it's clear where we stand. But in order to get that, to that process, so as Mike said, it's not hanging out there without being known to, to set the public hearing and then kill it at that point.
I, I think we can kill it by denying it right now, by not moving it forward.
I'm, I'm not ready to, to vote either way. If, if, if we are going to do the plan that our, that Mike suggested, then I guess we vote to table it. But I don't, I mean.
Here's my concern. The last time that, and I can't even remember what it was right now, but we took a very different stance than the Planning Commission did. And, you know, there are nine people right now that sit on that Planning Commission. And if we keep squashing things without giving it due process, so, so everyone has the chance to see what the Planning Commission saw. And everybody can have their opinion, right? We're going to have public hearing and public comment.
We've read that package. I read the package since it's on the website. We've heard the feedback from the public already. I, I don't feel a need to go farther with it. And I don't think it's an offense to the, the Planning Commission. They recommended something. We're saying thank you for your recommendation, but we're good.
If, if you, if you do that, the, what I'd want you to do is postpone it, not set it, so that you actually have a document in front of you setting forth the reasons why.
Okay. Otherwise, it kind of leaves us.
Hanging, right? In terms of, you know, what, what are the reasons for that denial? I mean, you can't be arbitrary, capricious, right? You want to, that's why we document these things.
So, if we table this now, can we get that document for the next?
Postpone, and yes.
Postpone it and then have that document that spells out?
I just want to do it the right way.
It's just like a resolution in, you know, introducing it and setting, except this one would be that resolution, not moving it forward and the reasons why.
Okay. So, we want to wait till we write that resolution or we want to?
We're just going to table it for now.
Postpone.
Postpone it.
Oh, I thought I heard table.
Yeah, postpone.
Postpone. Two different, two different things.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to postpone this until we have.
Till the next meeting.
Till the next meeting where everything is spelled out.
I have support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is in regard to the recreation plan that we already had city council. The next item is in regard to the recreation plan that we already had City Council approve back this past July. However, the Michigan Department of National Resources would like you to reapprove it on their resolution format. It's governmental bureaucracy at its best. If I may request a motion accordingly, I'd appreciate it.
This is not controversial.
No, it's not.
Oh my God, my brain. I will make a motion to approve the resolution adopting city and CAPS community recreation plan.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Final item is a resolution enter, into an agreement with Mercantile Bank to obtain credit through, for the city of Cadillac. I think members of council, mayor, may not recall, we had discussed about switching over to Mercantile Bank for credit card servicing. We are using Mercantile Bank for other banking needs as well. This consolidation would be a benefit, and this final step is a formality within that process.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to enter into an agreement with Mercantile Bank to obtain credit for the city of Cadillac.
Support.
Or is that the branch?
Councilmember Shippers?
Why is that listed there? Okay.
Yes.
Alabas?
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to the last public comment this evening.
Pat Ponzac, I understand that, I might be wrong, but I think that 128 Pine Street is not zoned for short-term rentals. It seems to me like that's the answer. If it's not, and you decide to let them have their house there, I know that that's a very lovely home, overimproved, but I don't think that has to be my responsibility as a citizen in Cadillac that somebody overimproved their house. That's their problem. It's not your problem, that's not my problem. Seems like it's open and shut. If you do decide to go ahead and do it, then it's just another instance of your love for doing spot zoning.
Brad Marine Cadillac, just a couple of questions. Mike, you said that, that the testing tends to get lost. I'd be interested to know if you've got some documentation that shows or cities have done this, and that, that testing has gotten lost? Or is that just an assumption that you made out of thin air? I don't know. Also, Jeff, you talk about the city water. You use chlorine to keep the water clean, because as the water comes out, it's not suitable to, to drink unless you put chlorine in it. Well, some byproducts of that, when you put chlorine in it, are the trihethyl, tri, I'm going to try to say this right, trihalomethane and what they call a haol, haolic acid, which, if you do some research, those are carcinogenics. So, and you look at the Cadillac Quality Report, those cancers are listed in the Cadillac Quality Report. And you'll also notice in that quality report that those ranges change from year to year, which I'm still trying to figure that one out. It's like the acceptable range sways with the number. So if the number goes up, the acceptable range tends to go up. Maybe I'm reading it wrong. Some clarification would be great. You skipped six years, Marcus. I mean, I think there's enough people here to bring up enough issues, that it would have been nice if you could have addressed us to talk about those six issues, or those six years. It would have been nice, instead of looking the whole time at the City Council, look at the constituents of the people that you're serving, and tell us what your plan is. This idea that you just introduced a plan that you're going to require hookup, just because, just because Michael said that's what we're going to do? That doesn't make sense. I encourage you, and I'm disappointed, I mean, you've done great. I was like, all right, they're, they're rocking. Not one member brought up the Citizens Advisory Committee. You all are up there trying to solve our problems, as if we don't have a knowledge base to be contributors to this problem-solving process. It is brought up a couple times by myself, Mr. Barnett, and trust me, I like Bill, but Bill and I have not been colluding on any of this, all right? Why not? Why not have the Citizens Advisory Committee? What are you afraid of? Why are you not interested in doing that, Mr. Pika? I'm just curious, because you totally skipped it and went into trying to solve our problems. We've got some solutions, we've got some potential answers. Whether they're, they're, they're going to fit or not, we don't know, but you don't know what they are because you don't ask. And when we did, when we tell you, you tend not to listen. And I'm disappointed, and I, I met that, I came up with that conclusion in one meeting. I came in here with a clear mind, like you, Mr. Ingles. I was hoping to see something different. I can't say I saw that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Do I have to sign my name?
Yes, please.
All right. Well, my name is Sarah Gladwell. I am one of the owners of 128 East Pine. I am here just to kind of clarify our overall goal with this next meeting, that hopefully we will get the chance to make a presentation. I know the presentation that you guys have referenced and looked at is for us to get the short-term rental permit, and of course, if I had it my way, that would be the end result, right? But I totally understand the position that you guys are in, and I understand the bad behavior that my business partner on this project, Matt, had, and I hope that my actions since then have showed that we have taken this very, very seriously, and that I have been overly communicative since that point in time. With that being said, I am not up here to talk about short-term rentals at all for this next meeting. We have had the property listed since September, and when we purchased the property, it was listed for sale for seven, eight months with no interested buyers outside of us. And we are experiencing that same exact thing for every single buyer that is interested in this. Nobody wants it as a full-time tenant, this is my house permanently, I live here full-time. With that being said, there are people who are interested in buying it if it had B2 zoning for other businesses that are not short-term rentals. And so I'm just looking to not have the property rot and go into foreclosure, and us have nothing that we can possibly do with the property, because we can't sell it as a full-time tenant, residential piece of real estate. And so every interested buyer that we have had in this property needs it rezoned to B2 as well. And so I, I'm not here to ask you to let me run it as a short-term rental. I understand the narrative around that and the opposition to that, but I am asking that we just get the opportunity to be heard, to have it rezoned to B2 for it to not become an eyesore for the city and an absolute money pit for us. Like, I am very ready to walk away from this if you want us to walk away from it, but I can't walk away from it if I don't get the opportunity to at least speak and, and show you guys that, you know, B2 rezoning is best for the city, even if you don't want it to be a short-term rental. The short-term rental permit would have to happen after that anyway, so the rezon meeting is not you guys saying that you approve it in any way. I was told from our legal counsel and the city people that I've been communicating with, that we didn't even have to be here tonight, that we were going to have the public hearing, and this was just a formal portion of that, and that the public hearing would be the portion that we had to show up to. And then I'm here catching my breath, thinking I'm not even going to get that opportunity. So I'm just asking that we get the opportunity to speak, that we just get to present it in a way that is not us asking to be short-term rental operators in that property, but is just asking us to get into a position where the property does not rot, and it becomes a benefit to the city in some way, even if it is not short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Imagine having a public hearing, and the council members already made up their mind before they got here. Why are we having the public come and talk to you if you've already decided that's what was just about ready to happen? I got a message, Bill Barnett from Stimson. An individual on Platt Road who's got PFOS 10 times worse than PFOA at 6.4. It's above federal guidelines, guy's right past the soccer fields, okay? I got a person across the street. You got to work with Herring and figure out what's going on over there. Their well field was ruined. There's people drinking this all up and down. 13th Street, half of that's been tested, but this is bad news. You've got PFAS on clam, that's where you put the, put all this. Please put filters on your LDFA, on your sewage department, that you're discharging. Do something with that. Back in 2020, the EPA went to the city and said, go to your council and talk to them about this decision to block PFAS. Never came to council, probably went to management, they said, take it to one or the other, while your manager was on the LDFA. You are hiding things. Six years were left out of a presentation. We're not dumb, okay? You did a paper, says, thank you, Mayor, for doing your job late, but you did it, thank you. Please put those responses on the, online, like you're doing with everything else. Be transparent, please. The closed session doesn't look transparent when we're not told what's going on and we get a surprise announcement that behind the scenes paperwork's been going, and you've actually done your work. Thank you for doing that. Stop, I'm going to ask you to, to stop charging, discharging into the clam river again. And I've got the bad news for you. It's near the soccer fields, it might even be in Casa. I was told five years ago they didn't have a well there, and they use bottled water, but I'm hearing kids are drinking out of that. But put the written comments from your council members on Mr. Petcha, please, don't hide those documents. I mean, what's the status of Foster's well on Sixth Avenue? I'll help you if you need it. Eagle, sounds like they don't want to test it now because he's not living there. Can the city, can the city test one well? Can you just do one well? Just one? It's been seven, eight months, you haven't done one well? Marathon, great. How about Houston, Wright Street, West Division, Seneca, Leeson, Arthur Street? It's all over there. Get telling these people to not drink it, please. Your filters, they go to 20 parts per trillion for two chemicals, PFOA, PFOS. That's it. Rest of them, no guarantees. 20, what if, what about the guy who's got 6.8, 6.4, why is he putting a filter on? He doesn't touch it. He's worried about spikes, I guess that's what it does. Stops the spikes, it's placebo. Mary Street?
Mr. Barnett?
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Please no more junkets as well to out of state while people are drinking poison, okay?
Really, really.
Sam Knopf again. So I had this prepared for last month's meeting, coincidentally, Bill, kind of something that you just touched on. So, Councilmember King, you nailed it right on the head last month, and I'm going to read this directly out of the Opens Meeting Act of 1967, so that going forward, there's no misconfusion among council members. So, the Opens Meeting Act of 1967, 15.268, Section 7, Paragraph 1. A two-thirds roll call vote of members elected or appointed and serving is required, not option, required, to call a closed session, except for sessions permitted under Section 8, Paragraphes A, B, C, G, I, and J. What are those six letters you ask? A and B talk about dismissals. A talks about the dismissals or suspensions of elected public officials, or to that effect. B is the dismissals, suspensions, or removal of students. C is the strategy, negotiate collective bargaining agreements. G is the partisan caucuses of state legislatures. I is compliance of public health code. And J is if you are seeking presidents of higher education institutions, or searching or selecting those members. Them are your six exempt categories. The roll call vote and the purpose of, or the purpose for calling that closed session shall be entered in the meeting notes, or in the meeting minutes at which the vote is called for. What is not covered in those? Section D, E, F, H, K, and L. D talks about the purchase and lease of real property. E talks about consultations with the attorney. F talks about the application and employment of city employees or employees. H talks about exempt material from state and federal statutes. K talks about school board and security threats and planning. And L talks about your veteran service committee. I highly encourage each one of you to read 15.271, which is compliance with that, as well as 15.272, which basically states that if you knowingly, after, you know, after you know this, if you violate that, you are guilty of a misdemeanor. So I highly encourage you to read that. And then my last comment would be for Jeff Dietland and just everybody else talking about the biosolids. There's a farm downstate in Michigan that was putting biosolids on their field, and guess what happened the moment that somebody showed up to test that farm, to test the animals? That farm is now defunct, out of business. They're going to lose everything that that family built for 40 years. And it's not just Michigan, it's happened in Maine, it's happening in Iowa, it's happening all over this country. So I guess kudos to us that we have a Class A sludge, but that doesn't mean a lick to me until somebody's out there testing those farms that it's getting put on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I, I, you know, you guys have to be commended too, because I know that you've come a long ways on the zoning enforcement. When we were here two years ago, there were over 20 illegal short-term rentals in, in town, and now I don't know that there are any. So I think that you guys, good job there. But I also am fearful of stuff like this. I think Sarah can be very persuasive. I saw the, the Planning Commission, I saw the Planning Commission bending over backwards, trying to accommodate her, and they even offered to use the overhead to put a presentation on, and nobody has ever offered that to any of us, so I feel like it's not really fair. So the, the dog ate my homework thing really does ring true, because we know that, that Foster Swift had reached out to them at least four times, and that, we know that John Wallace had talked to them and said, you should get this zone B2. And we know that they did not do that. So I really like the, the communication you guys are saying, and saying that we don't want to do it. I wish that it would have been slam dunk today, and I understand that it's not too. So, at the Planning Board Commission, they were talking about a perfect storm, and opened a can of worms, and they got blindsided. We got, that's what we got, you know? So my fear is that to avoid this spot zoning, which I would consider the spot zoning, even though it's adjacent to existing zoning, that would that make it open to everywhere that there's existing zoning? That now we can, we can change that zoning, so it's not R1, and we can, anything that's got TS1 or B1 or B2, we can change the zoning because it's already contiguous. That bothers me. That bothers me more than this unit here. But that's the, that's the logic that's coming behind it, and that bothers me. I, I think a big fat no is good, and I really like what you guys are saying, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, it's me again, again, because I, I have a few more things I'd like to say. Definitely solution-based, solution-oriented, always have a one, two, three, and five-year plan going for each one of my businesses and every one of my interests. I think that we should do that here around the PFAS situation as well. My mom was right, I am going to start knocking on doors. I would love for you to come with me, any of you four here on this side, love for you to all come with me. I'm going to start knocking on farmers' doors and landowners' doors as well, because it's become very apparent that I get that we have Class A biosolids. Class A biosolids can be applied to food that we eat. Very happy to hear you saying you're applying them as Class B. I hope that means that we're also not applying them to human food fields, because Class A can be applied to human food fields, but Class B can't. So I'm really curious about that piece, I'm going to be doing some research on that. I'd love for Jeff Dietland to come walk into these farm owners and these landowners with me and knock on doors with me, let's get them the information from both of us, let's build some trust in them, because they're feeling a little left in the dark right now, and they're getting a little bit upset, and we might be left without any biosolid farms wanting your product. So together, maybe we can bring an education that will be better for the community entirely. And same with the landowners with wells. Susan is doing her due diligence to find out who has wells on these certain streets, she's spending time and a half to do that. I have the information from Eagle, we're also going to work with GLPAN, and M-DART, and M-Part, and all the things, and we are going to get them the information. I'm going to knock on their door with a sweet carnation for their table and some information on PFAS, and try to really shake their hands and help them understand, because a lot of people don't use websites, especially biosolid farmers. They're not going to be the ones that are getting on websites to educate themselves. We need to bring the information to the people in the way that they can absorb it. So if that means knocking doors, I'm fine with that, I will do that. Let's see, I get it that I might not be all of your favorite people, okay? I get it I might not be yours, and that's okay, I don't care. I get it I might not be yours, and that's okay, I don't care. But really, I can tell you that we can all work together, okay? Owen and I are a great example of that. I'm probably not his favorite person either, okay? But I can't tell. And he doesn't know whether I'm his favorite or not, and guess what? It doesn't even matter, because we're two people working for the better good of the community. And that is what a partnership should look like, is what me and Owen have going on. You and I should have had that going on from the get-go. You choose to not give me that option, so here I am, finding my other options. I've got child passed away from cancer, mother crying at me, and the neighbor to where they lived has a high PFAS test. I'm gonna be looking into that. We've got growths that I've seen with my own two eyes, coming off the face and necks of people that live across from Baker College. That was terrifying. I have, in order to gain trust from this community, you will need to remove Marcus. That is not coming from me, that is coming from the entire community, which will flood your email very soon. We have biosolids.
Three minutes are up.
Oh, great, we'll move it on to someone else.
No.
Because it's a group, it's not just her?
Yeah, we are the Clean Water Advocates of Cadillac. We are a group, so we get five minutes. I'd like to continue if that's okay.
Actually, no, we gave everybody their three minutes.
But none of them are on an activist group called Clean Water Advocates of Cadillac, and because I am part of that activist group, which is putting in full-time work every single week investigating what's going on here and helping community members, I do believe that I deserve an extra two minutes. Can I please have that?
You can have an extra two minutes, and I'd love to schedule some time with you to understand the work that you're doing.
I would love that, and Susan is so smart, you guys need her on your team. She's way smarter than me, way, way, way. So, we just gave $6,000 to somebody's trip to go to a conference. I pay probably $3,000 a year to go to conferences, at least to improve our farmers' market. I will tell you that to test 150 wells, it would cost you $11,850 with the CycloPure Company, okay? So you just gave half of your well-testing budget away to a conference for a Main Street person who has done nothing in the last year to help with the dramas on Main Street. How, where is our $12,000 for the 150 wells that still need to be tested? I would like those funds reallocated to well-testing. I will say also, the 227 wells would only be $17,933 to test, and I'm pretty sure you could find that too. We've got irrigation wells all over the place that I'm hearing about, I think that needs to be looked into, it's not just private well, homeowners, irrigation wells are everywhere, and they are causing just the same amount of problem. I would also have to say, Marcus, you said nothing was hidden, you hid six years of information, and in those six years are some very, very bad things from your work, including ignoring testing, including not agreeing to testing, telling the EPA you've done everything when you didn't do it. I can see why you missed those six years. And I, I think that's close to it. I will repeat, I will not let this go. This will be my main mission in life, as well as Susan's, Bill's, and everyone else that I can inspire to join us. This will not go away, and we will not stop to remove you. Ms. Becky Anderson has the paperwork on that. Thank you.
Geez, I thought we were there for a minute. I felt really good. I'm like, Steve made all these good points, and pleasantly surprised by your comments about, let's let this rest. And of course, we're talking about the Pine Street home. Yeah, it's time to put it to rest. I think we're done with it. I recognize what the young lady said when she came here, but you wanna know what? Why, didn't we give them till the end of August? We gave them till the end of August to stop doing it. $2,800 a night? Wow. I thought we were there, we're gonna have a motion made, and then suddenly, Marcus, you look to your buddy there, our city man, our city attorney. Is it mandated, Mr. Homer? Is it a requirement that they have to hold off and wait so that we don't offend the high-end royal Planning Commission? Come on. We had this resolved today. This only provides time for you all, perhaps to convince a change of thought. I hope that is not the case. I hope when this paperwork is drawn up, it expresses exactly what you expressed here today, and that the next meeting, we hear nay to zoning it for approval at 128 Pine Street for a short-term rental. That's it for me today. Thank you for your time.
I'm Linda Durant, and yes, I do live in town. And I didn't understand them asking to have this approved for a short-term rental at 128 Pine. They went to the Planning Board, they asked to have it zoned like the rest of the area, I mean, they're right next to the book nook, which is B2. They are a half a block from Main Street. They wanna do something else with that property. Even if you make the zoning correct for there, that doesn't automatically make them a short-term rental. They'd have to get a special use permit. They wanna do something else with it. I would really hate to see that piece of property just sit there and get vandalized and be an eyesore in town. And I disagree with Mr. Torres. As far as the Planning Board goes, let's not throw them under the bus, they're a very useful tool for all of you. And I'm disappointed that you turned this down for the zoning part. It didn't mean it was gonna be a short-term rental. It wouldn't automatically become a short-term rental if you made it the same as the book did, as far as zoning. And they're a half a block from Main Street. That's not a residential area, they're surrounded by apartments. So, yeah, they would have to come up with some business or a use for that property, but I don't think you're being fair with them.
Good evening, my name is Ethan Gladwell, also one of the owners of 128 East Pine I know we've kind of already stated a few things tonight, but we were here solely to ask for a rezone. We aren't asking for any sort of, sort of special use permit, anything like that. We specifically went to the Planning Board, and, and all we talked about was a rezone. In order, from what I understand, in order to be a doctor's office, a med spa, or anything like that, it has to be rezoned to a B2. And so that's all that we're asking for. I know there's people upset, I know there was negligence. We, we've dealt with that. We look bad in the public, we understand that, but like my wife had mentioned, we'd been here at every single meeting, this one including, included, even though we were advised we didn't have to come. We wanna show face, we wanna show that we're sorry, we've paid for all legal fees. I just don't understand what more we can do. And so again, I'm just asking, we're not asking for a short-term rental permit, from what we've been advised, that's a whole nother two meetings, back to the city planning, and then back to you guys. And again, we've had no interested buyers in seven months, I'm on that property, and it's not a matter of if it goes into foreclosure, it is a matter of when it goes into foreclosure. And so again, I'm just asking that you guys extend the courtesy, and please, if there's anything we can do to get that vote, to convince you for just a rezone, we'll do it. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Theobald. My wife is the commissioner of this county. We are residents of this city. I've lived in this city and around this city for going on 40 years now. And now I'm hearing since 2018, you've been covering up poisoning of our water. We have wells out there, people out there that have cancer. I've heard, since I've lived in this community, of lots of people dying from cancer. Is this possibly related to the water poisoning? Is this possible? Now, I've heard a lot of very well-educated people talk here tonight and throughout this time. I'm not that well-educated. I'm just a veteran, a community member, and you have me upset. My wife was upset, and she's thinking about stopping me as the commissioner because of it, just to go after your job or your job. That's a step down from what she's doing. That upsets me even more. Mr. Petya, sir, I've never had a personal problem with you, I've always had respect for you for what you do, but from what I'm hearing, you haven't been doing your job. You've disappointed your citizens. You've failed to look out for their protection. That goes for the rest of you council people. You've failed to protect your citizens. It's time to step up and get this job done, and do it correctly. Mr. Dietland, there's no wells in the city of Cadillac. Isn't that a direct quote, sir? It's time. People need to stop and think, and do your job correctly. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to go to the order.
I can go first, okay? First of all, you're absolutely right. We need to talk directly to the citizens and get feedback from the citizens. You've heard me say it, please don't give up on that. So on the water issue, yes, I believe we need public input, and we need you guys to be involved and give us that input, because it's a serious issue. Again, I'm gonna say, it's a national issue. There are issues that industries contributed some, but a lot of it's from our own wrappers, our Teflon, every, it doesn't lower the bar that we need to keep people healthy and we need to look out for them. So hear me when I say, we hear you on that, and we wanna work on a solution with you, and we will talk with you and to you and listen to you. So I hear that message strongly. In relation to written input on the evaluation process, good or bad, put it in writing, get it to us. This is the time to get all of it out there so it can be assessed. Please, most of you have my email address, phone, same with the rest of council, if you can include us all on that, but let's do that so we can get this job done that way. I have asked and talked to the mayor about adding to our agenda, when we have nights like this and issues like this, a second public comment that would be a question and answer with council, so that we can answer your questions. So we are working on that, I want that. Even if we said it's a second meeting of every month, and then pick that we put on the agenda certain issues that we do it, so that we are hearing you, and you don't have to look at our blank faces, sure, asking us questions and we can give input back. That's all I have to say. In the meetings, you heard the motion tonight. At the first meeting, if you weren't here, we as a council have moved, all meetings will be on CCTV, so those that are at home can see every meeting and participate.
So, I have a couple of things. First of all, I think a citizens advisory committee is a good idea, but I think it needs to be at the county level. This is not just a city problem, and judging by the people who are speaking to us, who are not even city residents, this affects the entire region, so maybe Mr. Theobald could talk to his wife about spearheading, or you guys go to the county and ask the county to get this, to get this, to get a citizens committee together at the county level, so we can start working together. As you heard earlier, we've reached out to Herring, offering city water services, municipal water services, and we have not heard back. If there was a county-wide advisory board, it would be, it would be perfect. So, I just wanted to say that. Then, excuse me, I would also like to address one comment that happened earlier from a citizen who said to me, for you, those of you who are upset with me saying at the last meeting that I represent more people than are in this room, and in my form of storytelling, mentioning, talking to people in the market, or in town, or whatever, that is not the only place where I hear from my neighbors, who I represent, all of my neighbors. And when someone said that the absent do not count, does that mean that my elderly neighbor who cannot get to these meetings doesn't count? When my elderly neighbor talks to me about issues in the community that they want me to help them with, they don't count because they're not here? Does that mean that my other neighbors who work evenings in town here, or outside of town, who cannot make these meetings, does that mean that they don't count? Does that mean that the people that don't vote don't count? Does that mean that the people who aren't old enough to vote don't count? Does that mean that the only people who count are the people who are able-bodied, have working vehicles? My ward is over by Diggins Hill. I have lots of people in my ward that do not have working vehicles. They talk to me. So when I say that, you know, I was talking to someone in the supermarket, that's where people talk to me. They talk to me in the neighborhood when I'm out for a walk, when I'm at an event at Diggins Hill, when there's things going on at Diggins Hill, they talk to me. They will call me up. They will see me around town and know that I have their best interest in mind, representing them here at this, in this chair. I love that you're all here, and I love the passion. I was, most of my time in Cadillac was on the other side of that. I was on that with the, with the initial Kaiser poisoning of the wells, when Pete Stalker was here. I was working on clean water and, and other issues, hate issues in the community, and wagging my finger, part of the original group that brought recycling to the town. And we wanted, we did it all volunteer, and we wanted the city to take it over. And I was over there wagging my finger and saying, "This is your job, this is not my job." So I understand that passion, and I want you to keep that passion, but I also want you to understand that when my job changed to sit on this side, I have to represent everyone. I have to represent those who cannot be here, those who are too anxious to get up to the microphone. There are people here tonight who are too anxious to get up to the microphone. And I've said, "Talk to me afterwards." But I'm, my job is to represent all of my neighbors. And if you find that offensive... And if you find that offensive, then I'm really sorry. Perhaps I did not put it very well. I just, when you say, we speak for the people, I have this many signatures, I speak, I speak for the people. All I said was, I hear for more than the people who are here. And so I have to weigh everything. And it's not, it's, as you must, you must agree how difficult this is. This is not an easy thing, first of all, to feel your pain and to see your fear. And there's a lot of misinformation out there, and there's a lot of accusations flying around that do not solve anything. And yes, there were credible, specific threats. We're not talking about people just making snide comments on Facebook. We are talking about specific... And this is what happens when we raise the temperature. And when we start accusing people of being dishonorable, of being hiding things. I have never in my life covered something up or hidden it, ever, ever. I don't lie. I tell the truth, whether you like it or not. And I will always, always, while I am in this seat, represent all of the citizens of Cadillac, even those who are not here and are not able to, or for whatever other reason are not here. So that's my take on that. That is all.
I wanted to continue talking a little bit about pollution and PFAS. The last time, you know, like I said, the last meeting, I'm here looking for solutions. We definitely need to encourage all residents to get their wells tested as fast as they can so we can continue to pinpoint any large sources and begin to understand how we can clean up. We need to continue working with Eagle, Empire, and the EPA. The quicker we can understand the problem, the sooner we can get started on long-term solutions. You know, I'm pleased to hear that we're developing the plan to expand infrastructure. Like we said, we don't know if we'll need those plans, but the plan to help the Herring Township neighborhood, the plan to expand the infrastructure to Marathon Drive. If we don't plan, we won't be ready when the resources become available, and we might not even be ready to apply for the resources we need without those plans. Thank you also for recording and posting the LDFA meetings. I was able to watch the last one on YouTube, which was a fantastic resource for me as a council member. Thanks to Matt Schickdell for agreeing to be the chair of that board. Thanks to Mike Solomon for agreeing to serve on that board. I think we got a good group of people there, and the fact that it is being televised has already been extremely helpful to me. And I hope everybody is watching that if they're interested in this topic. The issue of environmental contamination has been affecting our friends and families in Cadillac for decades and should not be minimized. I've been a vocal supporter for the last seven years of the fact that the city moved the wells out of the industrial park and put in, put the new well field in two different locations. We researched the water quality extensive in each of those locations. We moved them to those spots, anticipating the known and the unknown pollutants and the way they might move. And we did that to keep, to protect the water supply, because people deserve access to clean drinking water. That plan was a long time in the making and showed, you know, the type of foresight that we still need. You know, since I've been on council, whether it was supporting the brownfield to clean up pollution left by the dry cleaning business, or any other brownfields, or cleaning up the mess from the burned-down Mitchell Bentley building in the industrial park that was abandoned by its owner, or voting to spend general fund dollars on managing the lake when the millage expired. You know, it's always been my mission to use city tax dollars and resources to clean up the mess. A lot of times, the mess that's been left here by prior generations. And to protect and manage our natural resources, the lake water, the groundwater, and that, you know, that passion and need has only intensified with the recent issue of PFAS. I do have something to say about dirty politics in the city of Cadillac. Several people have mentioned it tonight. Because I don't think this PFAS issue should be a political football to kick back and forth. But, you know, I have a letter from the utilities director after he called Ice Mountain. Someone in our community called Ice Mountain on December 19th, before they brought water in for the city to distribute to people, and asked Ice Mountain if they wanted to be a hero to the local community. The person who called Ice Mountain said they were a member of the media, asked them if they wanted to be a hero, and then asked them not to work with the city in providing clean drinking water to its residents. That's what someone did. Thankfully, Ice Mountain didn't listen, and thank you to Ice Mountain for supplying us with water. You know, there's bad actors out there, like the person who sent messages to the mayor, like the person who called Ice Mountain and told them not to work with that, work with us. But in spite of that, and in spite of what some people are suggesting, I don't see this problem as the city of Cadillac versus its people. We're here fighting together against decades of pollution and poisoning. We're here continuing, or trying to continue the work to clean up the toxic chemicals that past generations left behind. I think there aren't many things more important in life than leaving, you know, this place in better shape than you found it. I do have, you know, two requests, because I think, you know, it's important to discuss some of the mistakes or missteps. In watching the LDFA meeting, you know, I did learn a little bit more about, you know, the tests that we missed. I think there were three or four years worth of quarterly tests that we missed. I think it's important to talk about, I think people need to know what the test was before that time period and what the test was afterwards. I think if you can show people that the trend line didn't change, that would mean that we didn't fail to detect a problem because of lack of testing. That would be one of my questions, as I understand, and try to talk more about that issue. And then, you know, the other thing which Bill has suggested, and it'd be nice to have a small-scale program where we did test some of our wells that were in the city but not in the area of concern, you know? These heat maps are only as good as the data that's on them. And even if we did ten to twenty houses, I mean, twenty houses is almost 10% of what we have. That's probably, that's probably over 10% of the untested houses. And I think it would go a long way towards making our dataset complete. I don't think that's a very big project. I don't, I think we, the information, we could glean from that, the way we could speed that process up, because without us doing that, they'll get there, but it'll take a lot longer. And I think we could do a small number of houses, which again, if you spread them out over the area of the city, it would let people know if their neighbor, if their neighbor tested clean, maybe they wouldn't feel the need to get a test. But if their neighbor's tests were concerning, you know, they would have that information available to them. So those are, you know, two of the ideas that I have. I want to encourage Marcus and Jeff to keep moving forward, keep thinking about new ideas and solutions. You know, a citizen advisory committee can't just be in the city. I mean, we're talking about Herring, we're talking, you know, we don't, we don't really know all that we're talking about. So I do think making this bigger than us and having a plan for the area and being able to discuss it and get ideas from all over the area is a fantastic way to continue working towards a solution. So.
So I have a couple of things to say, but I know earlier today, Councilmember Shippers shared with me what she heard on interlock and public radio this morning, and I think it's important for you to share that.
Okay, so I was listening to morning edition this morning, and it was interlock and public radio. And they have a thing from up north, and they talk about the news from up north, and one of the reporters, you can actually, because it's, you can listen to it, but he went on for like five minutes praising the Cadillac news for their reporting on PFAS in the community, and their reporting on helping people become informed, on what the city was doing, what the community can look to, what the other organizations are doing, but just a very thorough reporting on this issue in our community. And what he said, he doesn't live in the community, lives up in Traverse City, and said that he's found that information from the Cadillac news very useful in his own education. So thank you to you, Chris, and to the rest of the Cadillac news for that. And here, and subscribe to the newspaper. We are one of so few small communities that have our own newspaper. And that's one of the reasons why it's so important. Ben, because I'll report on this, and if we mess up, they report on us.
So I would just say thank you to all of you who were here this evening, and thank you for all of you who have been here over Mrs. Ponzek, over the last couple of years, and continuing to share your thoughts. And for Mr. Marine, earlier, we didn't mention this advisory committee, because this is what we do during good of the order. So I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's a perfect outlet for the community to sit down and talk together, not just in the city, but county, city, all of us sitting and having the opportunity to have some conversation rather than just, you know, yelling at each other on social media, or even a one-way conversation because we can't respond. I really welcome that opportunity. We don't all have to agree, but we don't have to, we don't have to yell at one another. We can be solution-oriented, and when Ti told me this morning what she heard on interlock, to me, that's just not the Cadillac news. That's this group of people working together to identify this very important issue we have in Cadillac. We're not the only ones with this issue. But I think we're out in front of it because of all of you. So while some may feel like we didn't react in a timely manner, we're working on that, and we're working with the agencies that are out there. But I also wanted to share something tonight. I was the person that got the first death threat a week ago. Our community is so much better than that. You know, there's a lot of things that we can't change at the national level, but we can make a difference right here in our own community, and the only way we're going to do that is together. And so while that was very frightening, and while some felt like, oh, well, maybe it didn't happen, maybe it's, they're trying to hide information from us. I am telling you how that felt was awful. And even though I couldn't share that with all of you at the time, we need to do better as a community, because I would never want that to happen to anyone in our community, anyone in this room. And so we have to protect one another, we have to care about one another, and we need to make it happen in our community. I don't have to be right. You don't have to be right, but as a community, think what we could do. Stop being angry with one another. You know, we all went through COVID. None of us planned for that, right? That's going to be once in our lifetime that we had to deal with, hopefully, right? That we had to deal with COVID, but that was something that came completely out of left field. Now we've got PFAS, came maybe not completely out of left field, because there's, I have a 2010 report to the city of Cadillac, letting the city of Cadillac know that there were elevated PFAS level in 2010. I wasn't the mayor in 2010, but I am now. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, because we got to do it together. Thank you all for being here, and with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.